Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 21st, 2024. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. County officials, are there any state or county officials present this morning that'd like to give an update to the board?
Good morning. Courtney Zinni, Berry County Commission on Aging. So, there has been some rumors or some misinformation about Commission on Aging out in the public, and I just wanted to come and clear a couple of things up. So, I want to thank those that have reached out to me and asked questions and gotten clarification, and just want to reiterate that we do have an open door policy at Commission on Aging. I'm happy to talk with anyone at any point about any of the things that we have going on so that they can hear firsthand what those items are. So, just to reiterate that. So, we do have two, I don't really want to call them both projects, but we do have two things that are happening right now. So, we have the new facility project, and then we also have the millage that will be on the August ballot. So, what I want to reiterate today and what I really wanted to come here to clarify was that those are two separate items. Okay? So, the new facility, you guys will probably get a more in-depth update in the next couple, two to four weeks, but where we stand at that right now is that we are looking at interviewing construction managers. The point is to get somebody onboard sooner rather than later so that we can really hone in on those costs, make decisions as we're determining site plans and building plans and construction plans, so that we can use costing, good costing, to make some of those decisions, because we do want to be really careful of encadment of the amount of money that's being spent on the facilities. That facility will be paid for by the monies that were already allocated by the commissioners, as well as fundraising efforts by COA. It has nothing to do with the millage. The COA millage is strictly for services, and has been since its inception in 1991. So, just to clarify some of that. And then, some of the other comments that I've heard lately, or that have been brought up to me is, and I know we can all get into argument, how big should government be or not be, or any of that, but you know, some of the comments I've heard that really, unless you're working with this population, maybe there's a little bit of a misunderstanding or misconception, you know, family members should be taking care of their own loved ones, right? Like, we should take care of, well, in a perfect world, that'd be amazing, and that'd be wonderful. But there's a million Americans, and that's an estimate, right? Like, we don't really know what that number is, but a million or more Americans that don't have a support system, period. So, whether they're at home, or whether they're looking at having to move into an assisted living or skilled nursing, they need support, and they need help and guidance. They need to know where those resources are. And so, for 50 years, that's the role that Commission on Aging has played. So, we've been there to provide those resources, to help people remain at home and independent as long as possible, and those are the services that the millage covers. So, I did, I handed each of the commissioners a handout. There's some over on the table for the public if they'd like to see. But each year, the millage supports 53,000 meals delivered to homebound seniors, 16,000 meals served in a congregation setting, 8,000 hours of adult day service for those with dementia, and 10,000 hours of in-home care service. We also have free weekly activities, exercise classes, nutrition workshops, events, trips, and like I said, we're the resource hub for social services for seniors. I want to reiterate one last time that the Older Citizens Services Millage, and that's a mouthful, right, but covers services, and it's right in the title, Older Citizens Services, for older adults, and it will not be used to fund the new building. So, just again, to make some of those clarifying comments. We will be having community conversations. There's a second sheet there that does list those, and in addition, COA staff and board members will be at all of the municipality meetings in June. So, questions and concerns, like I said, can come through my office or can be addressed at any of those meetings.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Questions for Courtney?
No, just a statement for one. For one, I mean, the adult daycare isn't like an all-day service. Sometimes just somebody needs a break to bring their elderly parent up there who's got dementia or something, so they can go out and get some groceries, get some sleep. It's not a babysitting service. It's more of a respite for a lot of people who are everyday caretakers, okay? And they need a break, and that's what was wonderful about that daycare up there is that you guys are providing somebody some, just a few hours of maybe normalcy, because I can only imagine what it's like taking care of an elderly parent, day after day after day. I saw my wife do it for three years, and I know what she went through, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, is your mic on?
It's on, but I don't know if it's working.
But I couldn't hear back through the... Additional questions? Courtney, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the information. Any other state or county officials? All right. Let me be public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Hey, guys.
Morning.
Philip Joseph, Orangeville Township. I really wanted just to come today to announce publicly that I'm running for county commissioner, 6th district. Your seed that you're running for joint commissioner now. So, I just wanted to let that know, put that out there. I know I know all you guys already, and you guys are aware of that, but wanted to let the public know, and that's all I got. So, Philip Joseph, you guys can look me up if you want. Got any questions? I'll be running as Republican. We'll go from there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Philip. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Gary White, Village of Asheville, Berry County, the 12th healthiest county in Michigan per MLive. First, I would like to thank the people being interviewed for the Veterans Affairs Committee for their service, and good luck in their interviews. I am going to address the Chair, the Chair Jackson's comments at the last meeting directed at me once again. This isn't the first time. It is a campaign year, and yes, after Commissioner Colton's comment to me at Maple Grove Township's meeting, Gary, you need to run against me for county commission, I then filed. It is clear to me your chair is insecure about the political nuances of tax and spending, bigger government, and come back and ask for more taxes. I am a constitutional conservative, responsible for spending, limited government Republican. The questionnaire, who better to put a questionnaire out for Republican candidates than the Republican Party? To allow for an educated voter base of candidates, being a free country, you could choose to reply or not reply. It's your choice. It's just the questionnaire. You didn't have to answer them all. If you don't answer them, it just gives people the, I don't know, why didn't you want to answer them? Your chairman chairs the Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee that does not meet under the Open Meetings Act rules. He is driving to open a 9,100-square-foot inefficient building, the old FOC building over here, for a few county jobs, and there is no cost estimates to what it would be to bring it up. The jail is a 15-year need. It has also been tabled, after all the millages, millage liabilities to the property owners have been assessed to the ever-rising tax bill this year. To only become back, to only come back and say, "Well, the great people of Berry County, you need to bleed more," and now want a jail from you. State constitution mandates are being ignored. The sheriff is the number-one elected position, so you must and should fund that out of what your tax revenues are currently. I find it, you know, odd that people have complained about a faith-based question. I'm not sure, you know, in this questionnaire, either you deny or you accept. So, you just sit back and you say, "What's the matter with the Republican Party putting out a questionnaire for, even putting it in the voter guide based on those people's answers?" It's brought up quite the controversy. It's never been done before. How dare Republicans ask Republicans questions? I think the INC has debates for presidential candidates, and people have the choice to go or not go. People have the choice of the questionnaire or to not, you know, answer the questionnaire. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Joel of Orangeville Township. I'll speak on the Second Amendment. As far as gun control, you look at the Republicans, and they claim that gun control is holding the gun with two hands. You look at the Democratic Party, and they're accused of putting together gun control legislation for the sake of removing guns. I'd be hard-pressed to back that up. I think that if you look at most gun control legislation as it's proposed, you see that it comes right after a tragedy such as the Oxford School shooting. Now, what I want to go, where I want to go with this, what if I told you that both sides were short-sighted? That neither of those approaches takes care of the fundamental cause of the problem. The Oxford School shooting is one that would, you have the parents who knew that their kid was unruly, knew that their kid was out of line, did not respect authority and so forth. So, what'd they do? They bought their son a gun for a present. And I can't help but imagine that they told several people that they know about the purchase of that gun. I can tell you, when I got my Weatherby .3378, I told several people about that. I want to reach out and touch an elk at 1,000 yards. It's the perfect gun for that. I'm sure Mr. Jackson knows all about that. I have talked with Mr. Sixberry here in just a little bit, because someone stole one of my 1911 handguns that I had out in Montana. And we don't keep those things secret. We joke about it, but we talk about it with our friends. I can't help but imagine that those parents went around telling their friends, "Yeah, we bought a handgun. We gave it to our kid." There is, and forgive me if I'm getting these, if I'm not putting words in the correct way, but there is a societal construct imperative that we hold our friends accountable, our neighbors, our family. Now, with that said, if they have criticism of us, I think that we need to be patient and stoic, but we also need to make sure that we lovingly call out people when they're doing things wrong. Could you imagine how that tragedy would have ended, or maybe not even happened, if perhaps someone told them, the parents, "Why would you get your child a gun? Your child is not behaved. Your child does not respect authority." Imagine how that would have ended. And so, I would submit to you that a metric, as far as the success or existence of our liberty, could be determined by the laws, the number of laws that must be made in order to keep it. We shouldn't need these laws. We should be holding each other accountable. That's how liberty succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment? Morning, Mike.
Morning, Dave. There's been some commentary of late about this questionnaire that's been going around. Well, let me run by you our platform, the Republican, National Republican Party Platform, it's short. Republicans believe in liberty, economic prosperity, preserving American values and traditions. They restore the American dream for every citizen of this great nation. As a party, we support policies that seek to achieve these goals. Our platform is centered on stimulating economic growth for all Americans, protecting constitutionally guaranteed freedoms, ensuring the integrity of our elections, and maintaining our national security. We are working to preserve America's greatness for our children and grandchildren. Republican Party's legacy, we were originally founded in 1854 for the purpose of ending slavery. Compels us to patriotically defend America's values. As the left attempts to destroy what makes America great, the Republican Party was standing in a breach to defend our nation and way of life. And I'd just like to say, thank you, on a different subject, thank you for those of you that stood with our Field General, John Lake, in getting the Second Amendment resolution passed. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was Mike Marlowe, by the way, from Hope Township, if you didn't know.
Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Carl of Township, excuse me. I was going to do this in the second session, but after we started this one, the, I suspect you should look at the Macomb County and the Los Chinacani Democratic Parties, because they also have sent out questionnaires integrating primary candidates to see if they adhere to the Democratic platform. Here in my hand, I've got a article that starts out, "The Ottawa County GOP will hold elected Republicans' officials accountable. This way of doing political business has allowed establishment Republicans to reign for decades, as well as having allowed numerous Republicans to, I don't really like this phrase, "in name-only" rail, to infiltrate the party." Apologize, I can't speak English today. They put a series of resolutions in here to go along with the questionnaires they put out. And by the way, they have also already had their nominating convention, where they have nominated the Republican candidates that they wish to support in the primary election. Okay? "Be it further resolved that the delegates of the Ottawa County Republican Party hereby commission the OCRP Executive Committee or designated subcommittees to investigate any party candidate or representative, elected or otherwise, who demonstrates flagrant and persuasive disregard for the tenets of the United States Constitution, Declaration of Independence, Republican Party platform of integrity, honesty, principles, and ethics. Be it further resolved, lastly, if found guilty by a majority vote of the executive committee, of flagrant and persuasive disregard of these principles, the delegates of the Ottawa County Republican Party commission the OEC Executive Committee to present reports of malfeasance to the public regarding any candidate or elected representative to reject and demand removal or replacement of the election inspector, poll challenger, poll watcher, or any other partisan role in the process of the election." The reason I'm stating this out is, we all kind of got surprised by the questionnaire that went out. There's There's a lot of angst associated with it, but this is not an unusual situation to have happen. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment? Bearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. This morning, we have interviews for the Veterans Affairs Committee. Brian Ackers was our first interviewee. He was not able to attend this morning, so we're going to go to Sylvia Raffels.
Raffles.
Raffles, okay. Good morning, Cynthia.
Mr. Chair, did he withdraw or did he just not able to come this morning?
Um...
Changed his mind.
I think he said he changed his mind, he withdrew his application.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Raffles, good morning, Cynthia.
Sylvia.
Cynthia, Sylvia, if you would, if you would tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would be a good fit for the Veterans Affairs Committee.
Okay, great. I joined the Army right out of college, commissioned through Officer Candidate School, Fort Benning. I proceeded to serve for 30 years, active duty and reserve in the Army. I deployed to Operation Iraqi Freedom. I, during that time, that 30 years, I saw, you know, we had a time of continued conflict, and I saw a lot of veterans in need during that time. And so I decided that when I had the time, when I retired, I was going to dedicate my free time to serving other veterans, and that's why I'm here today.
Awesome. We have three veterans on our board that are present today, so I'm going to let the veterans start. Commissioner Smolke.
Hi, Sylvia.
Hi.
Thank you very much for applying, and could you tell us a little bit more about the DAV and what you are involved in?
Right, I am actually a, one of the original members of the Hastings Chapter of the DAV. Currently, I'm the post adjutant. If you're not familiar with those duties, basically, it's an administrative position where I do meeting minutes and do the correspondence in the mail and anything the commander asks me to do. But as far as the DAV goes, we have been able to provide a lot of assistance to Berry County veterans, especially in the areas of providing gift cards to Walmart for veterans that need a little help in providing themselves food for a month, or doing car repairs, or paying heating bills. And we get, the funds that we get, of course, are from our Forget Me Not sales that we have every year here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Colton?
Go Army.
Hello.
Thank you for your, it looks like incredible, yeah, we got a couple Army, couple Army guys. Thank you for your incredible service. And what thoughts do you have for serving locally veterans?
Well, from what I've seen just serving now, I think it's been five years in the DAV and about three years in the VFW post in Dalton, there are some very basic needs of veterans in this county. Primarily, we see a lot of need for food, just the basic needs, food, helping to pay for heating bills, be it propane for propane bills or heating pellets. We do car repairs for veterans that need their own transportation, say for doctor's appointments. So I think that those are, those are some of the very basic needs of veterans in this community, and I think that this committee could do a very good job of coordinating with other veteran organizations in the, in the county. And I think if we pulled our resources, then we could, we could really do even more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Campbell?
I got one hand up on this one because I'm associated with Sylvia through the VFW. I'm the commander out there, and I'm speaking as the commander right now. Working with her is nothing less than amazing. She really makes my job so much easier administratively, always, always on top of everything. We do special projects. We just completed a project at Prairieville Cemetery with the upcoming Memorial Day of cleaning veterans' graves and spewing them up and doing things like that. Of course, so is intent. I can't think of any program we've worked on that she hasn't took an active part in it. I also belong to the DAV up there, so I know Ron Hyman very well, the commander, who was also a vice commander with the VFW post. And if I may speak for Ron, he's strong, he has recommended Sylvia. And I think he was the first one that came to me and we talked about it. So for the county, it would be hard for us to find somebody as qualified as what Sylvia is for this job. When I was a commander, I was a commissioner and I'd ask her, "Are you going to be at the parade on Monday?"
Yeah, we understand. That will be.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Tennyson?
Commissioner Campbell speaks highly of you, so that means a lot.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
I see you in Calhoun County were your mentor in Veterans Treatment Court.
Right.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, I don't think Berry County has a veterans...
And that's what I was interviewing, I was trying to see if they would be able to maybe do something like that.
Yeah, from what I understand, well, I think I spoke to someone in law enforcement a couple, three years ago, and they said there just simply wasn't the veteran population in Berry County to support a court like that. But it's a one new program, broken out into four phases. It is intended for veterans who have committed nine violent offenses, and it's an alternative court, so they can either face a regular court, face their charges, or go through this program. And at the end of the one year, if they're successfully completed all the requirements of the program, those charges will be dismissed. Each veteran is assigned a mentor, and that's what I do. Whenever they have a female coming through the program, they'll give me a call and I'll serve as their mentor. But, yeah, it's mandatory alcohol and drug testing, mandatory mental health counseling. Most of the offenses that I've seen are DUI-related, drug or alcohol-related, so they work with the VA, they work with local community mental health, and it's, I think it's had a really high success rate and a very low recidivism rate.
Yeah, because a lot of it's probably driven by PTSD, stuff like that, right?
It is, it is, yes, very much so.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but thank you.
Commissioner Doster?
What was your doctorate in?
Public Administration from Western Michigan.
Oh, very good. That's all I had.
And I'm also a graduate of the Army War College. I have to throw that out there.
Graduate of?
Army War College.
Oh.
Just to irritate the other services.
Commissioner Campbell?
Uh-oh.
She is doing a very good job of irritating the others. Well, you said she does a good job of whatever she's involved in, so apparently she's exceptional.
Yeah, my primary job at the VFW is keeping Bruce straight, so anyway, so...
Big job.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gaddy?
I don't have any questions, just your passion to serve and continue to serve well after your military service is impressive.
Thank you.
And we'd be lucky to have you on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. One of the things we always like to look at is your board experience as they go through this. Calhoun County, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair of Michigan's Women's, Vice Chair of Michigan Women's Veterans Coalition, Member of Battle Creek, Brian Spencer, Sylvia, I mean, you've been involved a little bit, so you know, you're a very impressive resume, and we certainly appreciate your application for this position.
Thank you.
So we will debate this later on in our meeting and make a decision and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for irritating Bruce, too. Next interview is with Ryan Reader. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
If you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd see yourself being a good fit on this board?
Yes, sir. So I was originally born in Ionia, graduated high school out of Belding, then joined the Marine Corps. I was in the Marine Corps for six years as a field radio operator with First Battalion, Second Marines. During that time, I deployed to Iraq twice and then Afghanistan once. I got out in 2011, moved to Battle Creek, lived there up until 2017, when I bought a house in Hickory Corners where I now reside. At that time, I then became a member of the American Legion. After having some employment where I was traveling all the time, I then got steady income and stayed at home with employment instead of traveling, I became a MRA member. Since that time, I've been a post commander for the Hickory Corners post, and I'm about to start my second year as the District Service Officer for the district, which encompasses five counties. And I was also just elected the second vice commander for the district as well. I currently work at the VA and the Health Technology Management Services, working as electronics technician, where part of my job is to make sure that all the electronics equipment is operational. But I also spend my time with my coworkers, making sure, because the majority of them are veterans as well, making sure that they have access to the care and facilities that they need as well. For instance, I have a veteran that I work with who was diagnosed as cancer. I helped him get in line with a BSO, so that way he can start the process of getting benefits as well as from the VA. I take pride in my service, and I take pride in anyone's service, and I would do anything to help anyone.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Campbell?
Semper Fi.
Semper Fi.
He was a Marine.
We would have never guessed that.
Boy, we got some candidates on this. Very, very good candidates. If this didn't go in the direction we'd like it to today, would you consider being a part of the county in a different capacity?
Absolutely, as long as it's not partisan, so I can continue my employment.
We have many, many positions every year that could use good quality Marines.
With that, sir, I do have one comment that I would like to see whether I'm elected for this or not in the future, is a BSO for the county. Because one of the issues I've had fighting for my benefits, getting denied for my hips, even though my knees and ankles, back, shoulders are all service-connected, they said my hips are not, after three combat deployments, is a steady BSO for the county. Currently, there is none. There is an American Legion BSO that comes through here, but she services many counties. And unfortunately, due to the lack of a dedicated BSO for the county, I have, unfortunately, have had to go the route of the lawyer, so now 20% of whatever I do get back paid is going to a lawyer, and I don't want to see that for anyone.
Very nice to see your passion towards the veterans.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Good luck with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smolke?
I really have no questions. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you, even though you're a Marine. Excellent resume, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Colton?
Are you working with the Battle Creek VA?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's where I go, and I have to tell you, I have been so pleased with the care I get there. And then, I'm not sure what part of electronics you're involved in, but I'm able to get my prescriptions online, get health reports and such, but I do like actually physically going there to appointments, and afterwards, I treat myself to some corned beef hash, and that just kind of brings back the old days of the mess hall. But incredible service, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And, you know, I always had these thoughts when I was in the Army. You see people come from all walks of life, and I remember in basic training, you know, young guys from all over the country, and some of them came from problems or brought problems, and then, you know, we're in our active service and, you know, kept things straight as possible, but my thought always was, what happens when they get out? If they're not there for a career, if they're just there for a few years, do they just go back to those kinds of problems that they came from? So I wanted to hear your thoughts on what you've seen of that and what do you see as for veterans, the outstanding needs that they have after they're out of the service?
Of course, sir. I mean, I've seen it both ways. I myself, I grew up in a broken home. I have five siblings, one of which I just met five or six years ago. But I didn't let that affect me when I got home. I've been married 16 years now, almost 16 and a half, two kids, one just graduated high school, one a freshman. So I've fought to keep myself in line. Others need help, and I want to be there to help them, and that's why I've been part of the Legion, that's why I've done everything I've done. And unfortunately, it's, part of the issue is they're either not looking for help or they don't know where to look for help, and I think that's the biggest thing that we can do for them. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Doster?
Did I see that you were deployed in combat zones twice in Iraq and Afghanistan, both?
Yes, sir.
How do you think that experience would help you on this board?
I think honestly, part of that experience is what drives my passion. As gruesome as it may be, seeing people that I have known at that time for months, years, either lose their life or limb, helps me push forward, knowing that I might have issues, but there's somebody who's out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gaddy?
Just thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Tennyson?
Thank you, but I don't understand why it's so hard for you guys to go through the Veteran Service Organization that you guys can't get your benefits. You know, and I mean, obviously, you're an advocate for...
Yes, sir.
Other people are going through the same thing. But I just want to thank you for that. I mean, it's, I can't imagine that you serve your country, and you have to fight to get service for yourself. So, but, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Ryan, we get to read a lot of resumes, and that's an impressive one. I've gone through, and we have a top-notch IT staff here, but if you're ever looking for something to do...
Thank you, sir.
Reading all your surveillance, your background, your military background, your experience with everything you've done with electronics, that's downright impressive. So I think you're probably an in-demand guy right now, so I appreciate your willingness to take additional time and offer your services to the county as well, so we appreciate that. Thank you for your application. We'll be discussing this at the end of our meeting, and we will let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Next up on our interviews, William Rhodes. William Rhodes? No, William? How about Gary Thaler? That is Bill Rhodes?
All right, sir.
Okay, there you go. Come on in. We were looking for you there.
Take the hot seat.
We're ready for you. You can sit on down, so. Good morning. If you would tell us a little bit about yourself and why you see yourself being a good fit for the Veterans Affairs?
My wife told me I was. My name is William Rhodes.
Thank you, sir.
My name is William Rhodes. I currently work as a court screener here. I am a veteran. I retired after 21 years with the Coast Guard, and I've always had an interest in helping veterans. And I can honestly say, I really don't know much about this position I'm applying for. I just heard that there was an opening, and they needed help, and I thought, well, maybe that might be something that I would fit in, and thought I would explore that, so...
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Colton?
I got to thank you for, with these screenings, helping keep us safe. Could you tell me more about your career with the Coast Guard?
I started out as an avionicsman. I went through boot camp, Cape May, New Jersey, went to A-school straight out of boot camp. I scored high enough. Went to North Carolina, I studied to be aviation electronics. I was in aviation for 16... I was in aviation for 16 years, made it to chief, E-7. From there, I became a warrant officer, went to a W-2, and I went to a ship, which was a culture shock. So, I hadn't seen a ship in 16 years, you know, all the helicopters and airplanes. So I became the electronics division officer onboard a high endurance cutter. As part of the, as a warrant officer, I had a lot of collateral duties, which included an ombudsman, I coordinated with families for deployments, we'd be gone for a few months at a time. When I left that position after three years, I went to maintenance logistics command Pacific, and I was in charge of all the electronics programs on the Pacific, along the West Coast and the Pacific area, Hawaii and Alaska. And basically, I controlled a couple million dollars to spend on electronic repairs for ships and stuff, and I retired.
Okay, well, thank you for that service. So in terms of ongoing needs, I know that when I go to the VA, they always ask me if I consider harming myself, if I have homes, am I living somewhere? Do I have home security? Do I have food security? What are your thoughts on Berry County and veterans in Berry County in terms of some of these issues?
I can honestly say, I haven't seen that. To me, it's an invisible population, and yet I know that there are a lot of veterans in this area, so I'm sure that the need is there. I would say, as a regular citizen, just in the county, that they may be unaware of what that need is exactly, because it's not as evident as it has been at other places that I have lived. But I know when State Street Diner was in business, I'd go there, and there'd be whole tables of veterans, you know, wearing the ball caps and stuff. And I've always had a real concern for the homelessness problem with veterans. I definitely don't like to see that. It seems like with all the programs that America has, they kind of get pushed aside for new citizens, rather than taking care of those that, you know, that we've had service from. So I'd like to see a greater emphasis on that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smoker?
I really have no questions, just thank you for your service. And with these interviews today, I spent most of my military time trying to stay away from officers, and...
But you can't say that with warrant officers, that's different.
Yeah. But with the tone that I've seen here today, maybe I went wrong there somewhere, didn't realize they were so nice.
Warrant officers are...
Not me, yeah.
Warrant officers are the best, because only President Caffey is. That's why they get away with a lot.
Commissioner Campbell?
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, sir.
I heard you say there, very good. I've just known Bill for a while, my wife, in the past, had worked down with security stuff in front, she always talked very highly of Bill. I think the best thing I like about Bill is he seemed to kind of give a call for help, and regardless of how deep his qualifications are, he stepped up and was willing to help, and I wish that more people in our county could look at things that way.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here, Bill.
Commissioner Tuneson?
Thanks, Bill, for applying. Got on your bio here, some experience with the VA system. What do you mean, can you clarify that a little bit?
Hospitals. I started, I met the VA system through White City in Oregon. I have a hearing disability from my years of service, too many years sitting underneath jet engines, so I've lost my high-frequency hearing loss. So my first experience with the VA was the health system, and which since I've transferred to the Battle Creek now, I go there periodically, and they take pretty good care of me.
Good, I'm glad they do.
I've done some work, they have helped me with housing loans way back when, you know, through the GI Bill, and I've done some, I have, I've had a associate's degree that I was able to do for the GI Bill, the Montgomery GI Bill, so.
Well, I appreciate it.
I'm kind of a fan of the VA, I know we take a lot of fire, or they take a lot of fire, but if you know what they can do for you, they'll do it.
Thanks a lot. Commissioner Getty?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for your service downstairs, and for being willing to serve on the board.
Commissioner Doster?
Did I see that you were also a police officer?
I was, yes, sir.
And what, what line of duty you specifically...
I was a patrol officer in Oregon. I started as a reserve deputy, patrol deputy, I became a deputy, jail deputy for several years, then I went to the Klammer Falls Police Department, and I was with them for about 16 years, so. I was in law enforcement for 22 years, I retired from Oregon.
Thank you. Awesome. William, I appreciate your application, certainly appreciate what you do for us as a screener down there, for your service, for your service to the country, so we'll debate this later on in our meeting, and then we'll give you a call or get back with you and let you know what they decide.
All right, thanks for the touch.
Thanks for coming up. Sorry about the false start there.
No problem.
Good morning. If you would tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you see, why you see yourself being a good fit for the VA?
I'm a new guy, I don't have the longevity that some of the people before have. I'm a Freeport transplant. I came out, joined the Legion a couple years ago to get involved. My times in Freeport have been sitting in the Shamrock quite often, talking to veterans, a lot of veterans, and I can see their need. I do, do all, 100% almost of my medical through the veterans. Now, I do it in Wyoming, which I've been very pleased with. I wear hearing aids, and I've had some other issues that I've had no problem with at all, but I know veterans have. My past comes up through education. I probably had almost 40 years through East Garn Rapids Schools, and then I retired from Thornapple, Calhoun, as their operations manager. I served once on the Board of Education for TK. So I'm used to boards, used to getting involved. I was a member of Thornapple Area Enrichment Foundation out of Middleville, and we were really close ties with Berry County Foundation. So that's where my background comes from. I'm a veteran, year in Vietnam, 18 months in Alaska. I enjoy myself at the Legion, I'm getting involved. Last fall, I was voted the volunteer of the month once. We've been working lately with a couple different things. A lady asked for help down in one of the lakes by Delton, where a lady, she was a veteran, had passed away, and we went down and cleaned out her house and everything, and worked on it for a couple of days. Also, we did another one with the Elks here, and I just spent just a couple hours last week helping lay a floor for a veteran whose wife has one of those large wheelchairs, and they needed a new floor so she could get around on it, so I went and helped them. So I am just getting involved, but when I saw the, the application, I thought, well, maybe that's a good way to get involved. I enjoy myself doing it, and I always try to help whenever I can on anything, so, but that's mainly my background.
Sounds like you're keeping yourself involved and busy, so.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Campbell?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I gotta admit, I knew I recognized you when you came to that table, and I was at that same lady's house in that lake over there, yes, worked on that, it was a very good project, big project. Again, we have a, we have a great abundance of very qualified people today.
Yes.
But most importantly, everybody seems to be interested in not only the Veterans Affairs, but stepping up and doing other things for the county and stuff, and taking a part of it. And I just hope you'll consider that, if this goes the wrong way today, or not the way you choose, that you'll stay with us and look for that next opening somewhere, sometime, and be there, because those are the kind of people we need. Appreciate you being here.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Smoker?
I've known Gary most of my life. We won't get into our younger years, please.
Go back to the Shamrock.
He is also now on the Historical Society, which I'm president of, and very, very good worker when we have projects done, and he sees things through. Can't say enough good about Gary, so, thank you for putting your application in.
Awesome. Commissioner Colton?
Well, once again, thank you for your service. What branch were you in, what branch of the service? That's what I wanted to hear. I'm intrigued by the...
First cab.
I'm intrigued by conversations at the Shamrock. And what did you pull from that? What do you see as some of the needs?
Well, I've seen some problems that some of them have. I know a couple of years ago, especially, we lost a real good friend that was a member of the Coffee Clutch, too, and he went through a lot of, a lot of problems, health problems, but he did get, he finally got on the right path, and I know he ended up in Ann Arbor a couple times and stuff like that, but I don't know exactly, maybe who pointed him all that way, but whoever it was did a good job, yes. And I think a lot of that is the problem. The homeless problem is something that, I guess, it boggles my mind, how we let that happen, so that's another of my concerns, yes.
You know, I saw that big billboard, and it shows a veteran looks homeless, and it says, "You are not alone," and it's very thought-provoking to me, because, like, you don't see it, because there, as a previous interviewee said, that it's kind of invisible, but it's there.
Yep.
So, and I know it exists in the county, so, well, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Commissioner Doster?
I don't have any questions, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Getty?
Thank you for your service, just, all our candidates have such a servant heart today, it's touching.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Tuneson?
Gary's a good man, he's a...
Thank you, Bob.
He sees a need, and he puts it right, one important thing, the other, and gets it done, so, we're lucky to have him involved with the veterans around Berry County, so, thanks, Gary.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
No, I appreciate your application, especially looking at your background with TK Schools and some of the things that you've done there to help out, that's fabulous as well. Have you ever had the opportunity as a Vietnam vet to do an Honor Flight?
No, I have not, yet, no.
Love to connect you with that, I did that with my dad last year for the first time, and it was an amazing experience, and if you haven't, if you haven't had an opportunity to do it, I would really encourage you to do that, so.
I've been to the wall, yes, I have, took my kids there, but not through the veterans flight, no.
We're, we're working on, hopefully, setting that up with some connections for Berry County vets, so they can enjoy those Honor Flights as well, it's been quite an experience.
Yeah, I've talked to some who just went this year, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome, awesome, I appreciate your application.
You're welcome.
We'll be discussing this afterwards. John, are we going to take a recess?
Yes.
All right, we're going to take a five to seven-minute recess. You are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you'd like, but you don't need to stay for the meeting, you're not required to if you'd like, so, if you're, if you were an interviewee, so, thank you. We're on break. We're on break.[287.31]
County and we're lucky to have her, so definitely endorse the renewal of the contract.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield's not with us today, but any other questions?
No, other than that, when I drove by there Saturday and my God, the amount of people, tires and, but it's a great thing to get rid of this stuff that's just laying around. And great that you guys started that program. That's, and it's growing, like Catherine said, it's growing every year, more and more. So that's, that's great for Berry County.
And when is the next solid waste collection?
Uh, September 18?
Seven.
September 7?
Seven, okay. Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Doster?
I think, I agree, I think you're doing a great job. I would, you know, I've always had this, I guess, I don't know if it's a faint to say it, desire for recycle pickup at the homes, because it's, it's so effective. I know that the costs are very difficult to ascertain. When I was supervisor of Prairieville Township, we attempted it at Prairieville, because Gun Plains Township, which is right across the road from me, has had pickup at the house for probably a couple decades now, a system. And, but we were unsuccessful partly because of these lakes, that it's so difficult to maneuver trucks down a lot of these roads. But are you, do you have any, is there anything you can, are you working toward pickup at a homes? Do you think that that's something that should be looked into further? We were, we were thinking of putting an assessment on homes in order to help to fund it, and at that time it was, it was relatively cheap. It was, I don't know, less than $25 a home, we figured you could provide 12 pickups a year or something. But it was so, we could not get the support in order to go forward with it at that time. But I think that, you know, society is, we're seeing these landfills fill. We don't want more landfills. You know, this helps preserve our space. And I think maybe there's more of a desire to do that, more of a willingness to pay to do it. Do you see that, or do you, are you working toward that at all, or?
We sure are. Our neighbor in Connie, Alleghen County, they do that very, very actively. They have a full-time coordinator making about triple what we pay for this one, who reports to the county administrator. It's a really, really important function there, and they really work hard at that. And there's things as we get down the road ways, I want to talk to you folks more about. Yeah, we look at it continually. The vision I have in back, I've been involved with this for I think 17 or 18 years now. The vision I have in the back of my mind that they're doing in many of those communities is, is having a franchise with the solid waste, the garbage haulers, like Hastings and like Middleville, places do that. That lowers the price by significantly. I don't know, it's 30 or 40%, something like that, the last analysis we did. Then take some of that money and add it into recycling. Then there can be, that you can bow out of, I think it's P38, we pay about $25 or $28 for the whole year, and they can opt out if they want to, have that option, about 90% of them know. That's a solution I see. We've been wrestling with that for a long, long time here, looking at issues and yes, that is, that is the concept that I have in the back of my mind. We're working on that. We just want to kind of make, because we can't get there right now, just kind of continuous improvement. We're working hard, this gets so much better. We had those three semis with, we had the football team from Dalton came in and they laced those tires and did everything they could to jam pack, and we were just jam packed and we didn't leave any tires laying on the ground with three semis, a record number of kind of tires. Motor oil, we had almost 1,000 gallons. We have four big containers that one of our members brings in the containers, had just about 1,000 gallons of motor oil. The sharps and all that, I got an email, I don't recall the exact quote, but the number of pounds of the, the high-level drugs and needles and that, that kind of thing. The electronics, we had a full semi there and got TVs laying all over the ground after that was full and the event was over. Just, just going, just, we're attempting to move in that direction, and the ultimate is to get served, I don't know, every two weeks or once a month or some of those kind of things. That's the goal, and it, and we're just aiming in that as the direction. We've tried to get there a couple times and it just didn't work. Orangeville tried really, really hard to, to take that next step and it kind of didn't work, so we're, we're just working on that. But yes, that is the image that we have. If we were in a metropolitan area or a very dense city, Hastings or Middleville, we could do that. And that's the goal, we just keep aiming in that direction. We, number one, don't want it to go in the landfill. And number two, the, the second phase of that is really to become a processor of that, to really be sure it's round and bale and do those kind of things. That's the number two part. And then the number three part is make it super convenient for all the people, just where it's, it's just in their DNA, this is trash and this is recyclable.
Thank you very much.
That's the goal.
Yeah, I think some of the issue is just the logistics of recycling and the fact that as opposed to being cost neutral or being a profit center, it's a loss, that the pricing on that stuff is, you know, unrecyclables just isn't there, so it's an expense versus, you know, a profit center. So, but I appreciate your work on that and looking into some of those things and, and that vision. So certainly with Rachel and some of the things that are going on, we see that going in the right direction, so. Additional questions? Hearing the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board commissioners approval to extend the professional services agreement between Berry County, the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee and the Berry County Conservation District for recycling coordinator services for 12 months effective June 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2025.
Some move.
Support, Doster. Motion by Getty, support by Doster to recommend of the board commissioners approval to extend the professional services agreement between Berry County, the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee and the Berry County Conservation District for recycling coordinator services for 12 months effective June 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2025. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
The motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, and we will, we will be back with adjustments and increased requests.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time this morning. Under Sheriff Sixberry.
Good morning.
Morning. Quite the file this morning.
Well, kept getting larger unfortunately, so. What I'm requesting for the committee to hold on this date is additional money to purchase and equip the patrol vehicles for the Chevrolet Tahos, specifically to recommend of the board commissioners approval to increase the 2024 approved capital budget in the vehicle fund to purchase and equip 2024 Chevrolet Tahos for law enforcement use by $97,977 from $135,000 to $232,977. It is a request by the Berry County Sheriff's Office, the Berry County Board of Commissioners grant authorization for additional funds to be budgeted in the vehicle fund to cover the cost of the change in the price of the three 2024 Chevrolet Tahos and equip three Tahos for the sheriff's office and a fourth Tahoe for the village of Middleville. The village of Middleville purchased their own Tahoe and reimburse, will reimburse the county for the equipment. The original estimated cost was based on $45,000 per vehicle at times three, which totaled $135,000. Per the attached quote, the vehicle price increased $6,837 from $45,000 per vehicle to $51,837 per vehicle. Since the time that the 2024 budget request was submitted in 2000, June of 2023, the cost of the equipment was not factored in the capital budget request and needs to be added, it is estimated that the village, Middleville, will reimburse approximately $20,200 for the purchased equipment. Unfortunately, sometimes being the under sheriff for three years, a little over three years now, sometimes there's learning curves that you get every year, and one of them was, we were the administrative assistant, was not made aware that the vehicle fund and the equipment for the vehicles came out of the same budget line. And we must not have ever went over it the last three years, thus I thought of, and so did the administrative assistant, thought it was coming out of a different line item, which Ms. Dennison graciously helped us with that information, that reason that was not requested and factored into that budget line for the vehicle fund. What we're asking for funding required? Yes, and if the local, specifically funded through the vehicle fund, amount of requested additional $97,977. Other pertinent information which you have attached with your information is the attached bid from November 16th, 2023 from Burgess Chevrolet, amount was verified on May 13th of 2024.
Okay, so the cost, the additional cost of the vehicles is $6,837?
Per vehicle.
Per vehicle, for three vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's 21,000, under 21,000?
Twenty thousand, five fifty or something.
Five eleven.
Five eleven, yes.
Okay, and then?
The additional equipment, because normally a lot of times our maintenance, Mike King, he will try to use stuff, other equipment from the past out of the other vehicles, but now being newer vehicles, and we had to purchase new Motorola radios for it, and that's another thing that look in the future, with the central dispatch supervisor administrator, said we're going to end up having to get lean encryption in all our radios, and that'd be also including the vehicle, the patrol vehicle radios. But anyway, just to give you an insight on that.
So the cost of the vehicles is, is under 21,000 for the three vehicles? And what is the cost to outfit those three vehicles with equipment?
According to what we've already taken out, we had for the vehicle capital fund, fund, it was 135,000 requested, which some of the equipment that's already been purchased, made it down to what we have left over in the vehicle fund, capital fund, is $72,632.67 plus, so that's basically how much it was. We used 135,000 minus the 60, I don't have it right in front of me, but this, 62,367.33 is what we estimated the year-to-date that we used to purchase equipment, ready to update and put into the new vehicles when we receive them.
So for three vehicles, it's roughly $62,000 to outfit them with the equipment?
Roughly. Also then, the money that approximately 20,200 to equip the Middleville one, which we will be reimbursed.
Okay, so there'll be 20,000 coming back from Middleville, they purchased their own vehicle?
They did, yes, correct.
All right.
So 97,977 minus the 20,200, which basically roughly be what is left over that we're, would have to put forth towards our three vehicles and the updated increase. I estimated 15% raise increase for vehicle from last year to this year, which they were 39, just under $40,000. So I estimated 15% increase, each vehicle went up over 30%.
Interesting, okay. Well, you answered my first question, which was, you know, it drives the guys and gals with the pointy hats in the office, one floor below is crazy when we try to do these things in the middle of a budget cycle, when they're not accounted for. So I think you've answered the question as to why that error in there. So out of the 97,977, it's really going to be closer to 77,000 after the refund from Middleville. And these radios, that was my next question, after being in the local emergency planning commission meeting a couple weeks ago, they were talking extensively about the lean encryption being required at the state level here soon, and that being a several hundred thousand dollar expense.
So I have an estimate, and this has nothing to do with the vehicles itself, and I know it has nothing to do with this part, just giving you a heads up, I have an estimate for portable radios that we purchased, it would be approximately just under 18,000 to redo each one of them. I think it's $480 apiece plus a $700 initial fee and et cetera, et cetera. That's not counting our patrol vehicles, that's only counting the portables, the portable radios.
So the portable handhelds already have the ability to be upgraded for that encryption?
Correct, when we purchase those kind of ones, which we, yes.
Okay, but patrol vehicles, we don't know though if they can be upgraded if they have to be replaced?
Based on my understanding, the only ones that are able to be upgraded are the new ones that we're purchasing. All the rest will most likely have to be replaced.
That's where the?
The money, the higher amount comes from, yes.
Okay, okay. Do you know how many patrol vehicles we have on the road right now?
I don't write off hand, no.
Okay. How many, and just trying to, how many active patrols do we have on, they're working 12 hours shifts now, four on?
Between three and five.
Three and five patrol vehicles?
On every shift.
Okay. For another conversation, I guess?
That's not counting the school liaison or the court security, and that's, obviously Middleville has their own up there, which is.
Okay. Question from commissioners, Commissioner Tumason.
I don't, Jason. How many vehicles, how many Tahos do we have in?
I don't have that right in front of me, but I presume we have, we have, because we try to keep three to four for spares when those go down. So I, approximately five per team, I mean, give or take.
So how old are the vehicles that we're going to replace? How old are the vehicles, obviously we're going to replace them?
Yes.
So how old are those?
One is going to be for the canine.
Okay.
I don't have it right in front of me, the oldest ones will be, so some of them, so three new ones will go to spares, and the other ones will either go to possibly the posse or, or part it out.
How often do you rotate vehicles?
On the average, we get three every other year and two every other year to replace the older ones.
How many, how many are deputies just at their house?
They're, they're assigned, if they live in the county, they're assigned to them.
Okay, so in their shifts, how many, do they work, how many 12 hours on the road do they work? I've always been curious about that.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every other Friday, Saturday, Sunday they work, and then they have either the Wednesday, Thursday off before, or the Monday, Tuesday after off, and then flip flop each week, so.
So it's three days on, two days off type thing?
Yes. And then two days on, three days off.
Okay, I get you. And is that, is that a good plan to have the vehicles at their house?
Where they can, if something comes down, they can go directly from there, they also start directly from there, so thus not driving in to get a vehicle and then head it out to the, the scene if it's close to where they live.
Okay, all right.
Additional questions, Commissioner Doster?
I don't know if I quite understand this, because the, aren't we like right almost in the, the start of a new budget currently? This is for the, the uncommon budget, this is for our current budget, this is an amendment to the current budget?
This is for our current budget, yes.
How, how much longer do you have to wait? Why, why isn't it going into, through the process for the new budget? I mean, aren't we in that process already here?
Yeah, these were, these were figured into the capital budget for last year, so the vehicle prices increased and?
Oh, I, okay, so it's a, it, it was the, the, making the purchase for this year, it's just that the, that there was a change in the circumstances.
Change in the circumstances, and they missed on the fact that they needed to also include then the capital request, the cost of outfitting those vehicles. So instead of being 21,000, it's 97,000 minus the 20,000 we're getting back from.
Correct, and that is also correct, and also quite often, Mike, when we do replace vehicles or take them out of the fleet, then a lot of times he's able to use some of that equipment to the new ones. Unfortunately, also the prices went up for everything else for new equipment, at the same time, which you would not expect, 30% jump, maybe a 10 or 15% jump, just like the purchase of the vehicle, so. The best part is, is this June, I'll know for sure that we will add the cost of equipment to the vehicle fund, unlike we did not do the last three years that I've been involved in it.
All right, thank you. Michael, that vehicle replacement fund, usually that has a pretty good balance in that projecting forward what we're going to need for vehicles for the county?
It does, it's got just shy of 600,000 in it. As of the end of '22, we don't have the audited numbers for '23, and I'll remind that the funding source for that is not a, an annual appropriation that's budgeted for, it's an appropriation that comes from any surplus funds that we have, we split those between vehicle, data processing, capital. So I'm not overly concerned about this year's amendment, the budget could handle that. What I am concerned about is looking forward, one, the, both the increase in vehicles and equipment costs, as well as then the information that Stephanie Lehman provided us to update all the encryption with the number of vehicles is, is concerning. We don't have a good handle, I can tell you how many vehicles that we have, I can get that, in our fleet. What I don't know is, is what you've asked, Jason, and that's how many vehicles are on the road, how many of them need to have that encryption and need to be up to date? So we do, that, that's something I think needs to be looked at, is can we, I'm going to just bluntly say, can we continue to afford to have the number of vehicles that we have out there?
Right.
Out there?
Yeah.
And a conversation that I guess needs to occur with the sheriff's department, under sheriff and sheriff, that what's that benefit? The benefit of the cost? How, how valuable and important is it to have 15 or 20 vehicles in our fleet actively out there, have to be up to current time specs versus, I think a little bit to your question, how many do we actually need if we didn't have them out there? That five or seven or whatever that number would be? And, and because there's a significant cost pressure, these at 70, almost $75,000 a vehicle.
Yeah, that was basically my question.
It wasn't too long ago, that that was a $35,000 to $40,000 number. So anyways, a long way around the barn, so to say, for your answer, I apologize, but.
So the money is there for this request?
Yeah.
But we'll probably be looking at vehicles, amount of vehicles, where they're at and potentially having to look for some cost savings going forward, so.
I can understand that also, it's one, another incentive to possibly get people to come here to work at the same time, due to the fact that unfortunately we're competing with everyone out there that has the type of thing, assigned vehicles and better benefits, but I understand where you're coming from at the same time. Although you, you can see where we're coming from also.
Yep.
And either way, you're either, whether you're doing it that way or not, otherwise you got a vehicle on the road 24/7 from back in the, back in the 1980s and 90s, and we were on there, we had one car or two cars on handling the situations as well, and then that car's been, would be running 24/7, obviously with adding the miles and everything up. I'm not saying different, I'm just explaining some other avenues that we only had three people on or one person on, or not one person, but one, two-person unit on or that type of thing, unlike now, we have able to equip it with up to five people, five different complaints at one time versus one or two complaints, because we take the complaints and the calls 24/7.
No, that'll be a future discussion, but yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Getty?
A question about the equipment budgeted, you know, was, it was an oversight, was it budgeted under another line item, just not coming from the equipment, not coming from the vehicle fund?
I'm just going based on what the administrative assistant provided me the information, so we, I guess, I was estimating the vehicle fund information for that, for how much the vehicles were costing us. That's what I was under the understanding, so. To answer the other question, I cannot answer, because a lot of times we will try to use, unless they get outdated, because the newer styles and they end up changing cages and everything else. But a lot of times we do try to use what's from other ones, and when he takes them out of the fleet, we try to use it to, for the vehicles if they were. But some of them are quite old still, and we still use them for marine or that type of thing.
Additional questions?
I think she was, Commissioner Getty was asking whether that, that money was, was just in a different line?
I, so no, there was not a different line, but that's.
It was not in a different line.
Okay.
This is a separate fund from the sheriff's department, not part of their budget, it's the vehicle replacement fund, and is not included in a separate line item.
Which is what I was brought to my attention by Ms. Dennison.
So just an oversight?
Yes, correct, but it won't be an oversight for this coming 2025 budget, because now that's another learning thing that we've, both have learned.
And I know that vehicles are very expensive, and we're going to face this, not just for the sheriff's department, but for, for all of our fleet that we maintain. I know the, the health department bought vehicles and they took a, a long look at, at how to most strategically, most affordably provide vehicles for staff, and I think we'll be looking at, looking at it across the board.
Absolutely. Commissioner Smoker?
Could you give me a rough estimate of the cost of NDC and, and on your new vehicles, do you put new NDCs, lights, syring, all that stuff in there? And if so, could you give me a general idea of what all that would cost per vehicle?
Most of the time we try to replace from what we're taking from others.
But if it was all new, would you, do you have any idea? And I'm not going to hold you exact.
Well, this is, I'll hand you a sheet, reference of vehicle fund capital, which we paid out for things that we have to have put on the vehicle.
Thank you. Is that what you call long arm of the law when you reach?
Thank you.
Thank you for this, this is exactly what I wanted to know.
Yes, and actually I received this from Ms. Dennison, so she was very helpful with that part. And that's what it's showing, replaces the three marked vehicles up at the top on number, line number nine, it shows 135,000, which was what we estimated 45,000 apiece to pay for. And then it will show you the different items over on letter F down that column, which will show you the things that we need to purchase for the vehicle, or which, or has been purchased for vehicles.
Additional questions? Hearing the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board commissioners approval to increase the 2024 approved capital budget in the vehicle fund to purchase and equip 2024 Chevrolet Tahos for law enforcement use by $97,977 from $135,000 to $232,977. Some move, Doster, support. Motion by Doster, support by Tumason to recommend of the board commissioners approval to increase the 2024 capital budget in the vehicle fund to purchase and equip 2024 Chevy Tahos for law enforcement use by $97,977 from $135,000 to $232,977. Additional discussion? nine seventy-seven. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Michael Brown? Good morning.
I'll try to move through mine fairly quickly here. The first is a renewal, and that's to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the Berry County inmates administrative services contract, excuse me, with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan for July 2024 through June of 2025. And I think we've done this with everybody in the past. This is, pertains to the inmates that are in our care custody and control, or more precisely, I say ours, I, the sheriff's department. I'm sure the corrections officers with all the work would welcome me to come down and say, you're welcome to help us. I underestimate the work that goes in there. But anyways, that are in the care custody and control of the sheriff's department in jail. It is not an insurance policy, if you may. What we are effectively doing is that while these inmates are in our care custody and control, we're responsible for the cost of health care that they might, might incur. And there's a process that the jail goes through. They contract with a doctor, Mid-Michigan Health Care, that provides medical services and oversight. There's a nurse that is at the facility. So inmates are screened, if you may, and if it's emergent health care, up to and including hospital care, that can get very expensive. If it's just routine, we don't just do routine things while you're there. But there's a process to make sure that necessary and emergent is taken care of. So what we do is we purchase through the, we're effectively purchasing Blue Cross Blue Shield's discounts, if you may. You're all familiar that Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and all of the major providers go to hospitals, and they negotiate discounts. So if you just pay a bill and you have no insurance, there's one cost. If you have health insurance, that's a discounted cost. Without this, we would just be paying the going rate, if you may. In this case, what it does is it says, okay, we're going to pay the Blue Cross Blue Shield discounted rate. So it's as simple as that. It's, again, not a medical or a health insurance policy for them. It's us as an organization buying into Blue Cross and Blue Shield's discount rates that they've negotiated.
I haven't seen any significant changes in this. It's pretty boilerplate looking.
It is.
Rate increase?
We've done, no, whatever their negotiated rates are.
Okay.
But we pay a small fee to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and, or a fee, I don't know, you know, but a fee to Blue Cross Blue Shield, a percentage to participate in that.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Colton?
Yeah. I'm familiar with Blue Cross's discounted rates. They discount patients of mine at my chiropractic office for services. But what's curious about this, so we pay Blue Cross just for the opportunity to have their discounted rate, but they provide no service whatsoever.
That, that's correct. They do not, it's not a health insurance plan.
That's a sweet deal for Blue Cross. So they give money and really have to provide nothing. But I realize the value of it for us. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I just have to shake my head when I think about Blue Cross.
It's a common, this is the, kind of the only option short of paying whatever the provider rates are. And this is the, there's a lot of discussion that continues to go on about making inmates medic, would it be Medicare or Medicaid?
Medicaid.
Medicaid. Thank you. Eligible. But that doesn't seem to ever get traction, so we were left with this as our option.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Can you refresh my memory? But I'm, seems like last year, it was like the cost of county, like two hundred thousand dollars for, I don't want to put you on the spot. You don't have to look that up.
It's in a hundred thousand.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But I know, but without this.
Correct.
It'd be...
Significantly more.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It just still amazes me. So they're going to play, pay Blue Cross for a couple hundred thousand dollars, and they provide us with nothing. Bless us with their discount.
Get the user discount.
We need to do it.
Yes. Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the Berry County inmates administrative services contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan for July 2024 through June 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Getty, support by Smelker, to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the Berry County inmates administrative services contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan for July 2024 through June of 2025. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. My next item is that, is a request to approve in accordance with the Airport Commission Joint Operating Agreement, the expenditure of up to sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase a minivan as a courtesy vehicle, and to approve an amendment to the Hastings City Berry County Airport Budget Fund, 295 Increasing Revenue Line Item, 295-000-679-010, from a thousand to seventeen thousand, one seventy-five, and then also the expenditure, the corresponding expenditure line item from seventeen, five to thirty-three, six seventy-five. This is a request from the Airport Commission. The Airport Commission had two vehicles, a van that was donated to them, and a, a large passenger van. I think it was a fifteen-passenger van that was donated to them, as well as a vehicle, Ford Taurus, that was donated to them as well. They have sold those vehicles. The Taurus was getting up in age, and the passenger van was just too large for what the need was. So they've sold both of those through auction. The proceeds were sixteen thousand, one seventy-five. The airport authorized the airport manager, subject to approval by the city and the county, to go out and purchase a used minivan to serve as a courtesy vehicle. If you're not familiar with the intent of a courtesy vehicle, it's a vehicle that remains at the airport. If somebody flies in from out of state, or not from around here, and wants to get downtown for lunch, dinner, has a business run that they need to make, it's available for that use. So you can see why maybe the fifteen-passenger van wasn't necessarily the right vehicle for that job, and why a minivan is more appropriate, so.
Commissioner Smelker, any additional information you want to share with the board?
No. Michael went through that real well. The van is insured through the liability of the airport, right?
Correct. Correct.
That was my question, is we're providing courtesy vehicles. We have insurance, gas expense, different things like that, and we have county liability on that. But John said that that was not under county, under the county policy.
It's not. The city, so since it's a city-county, joint city-county operation, we serve as the fiduciary for the airport. The city handles the, procuring the insurance, both for the property, liability, the vehicle, and then also for the fuel fund that's there, which is no small policy. So the airport pays for them, reimburses that. But the, but the city provides the administrative support to make sure that those are in place.
Commissioner Tunison, anything you guys want to add to that?
No, that's, that's exactly what it is. It's just, we didn't increase it. Whatever we sold the, you know, two other vehicles for, what we're authorizing to buy a new van.
I read the minutes. It sounded like it was a consensus vote across the board, so something that's been going on for quite some time, nothing new. So, okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve in accordance with the Airport Commission Joint Operating Agreement, the expenditure of up to sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase a minivan for a courtesy vehicle, and to approve an amendment to the Hastings City Berry County Airport Budget Fund, 295, increasing revenue line item, 295-000-679-010, from one thousand to seventeen, one seventy-five, and expenditure line, 295-895-977-000, from seventeen thousand, five hundred, to three, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Additional discussion? I guess I would take a motion of support for that first, so.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion by Tunison, support by Smelker. Is there additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. All right. My next is the reappointment of members to the Berry County Land Bank Authority, and it's to recommend, the reappointment of Dan King to a three-year term that began on May first of twenty-four and ends on April thirtieth of twenty-seven, and David Jackson to a three-year term that began on May one of twenty-four and ends on April thirtieth of twenty-seven. The Land Bank Authority Board is, is designed to mirror or mimic the Economic Development Advisory Board, pardon me, Brownfield, thank you, too many, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board. And both of these individuals are on that board, and would recommend the reappointment.
Questions? Commissioner Smelker?
With you on that board, is, are you on there in the capacity of a commissioner? Or is it just you as a civilian?
As a commissioner. I'm, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe that's the capacity. There is a, it's got bylaws on it. We just, I didn't pull that specific file.
What I'm getting at is a, a three-year term. I know you're running unposed, but shouldn't a commissioner be on one year at a time? That's all the committees I'm on. But if you're on in the, in the capacity of a civilian, the three-year sign, you don't need to be a commissioner, you know?
Let's pull that and look at it, and we'll bring it back to the BOC for next week.
Thank you.
We'll get a question answered for you. We'll just be sure what the bylaws say and that. Additional questions? The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners to reappoint to the Berry County Land Bank Authority, Dan King, to a three-year term that began on May first, 2024, and ends April thirtieth, 2027, and David Jackson, to a three-year term that began on May first, 2024, and ends April thirtieth, 2027. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Getty, to recommend of the board of commissioners reappointment to the Berry County Land Bank Authority of Dan King, to a three-year term that begin on May first, 2024, and ends April thirtieth, 2027, David Jackson, to a three-year term that begin on May first, 2024, and ends on April thirtieth, 2027. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with notes.
The next is also a, an appointment of additional members to the Berry County Land Bank Authority. The Land Bank Authority is, is requesting that the board be increased by two members, so that it, again, mirrors the membership of the Brownfield Authority. However, I received a call from Craig Stoltenberg this morning, so I may need to pull this one, that, that the Land Bank Authority is, is requesting that Cindy Vujay and, instead of Craig Stoltenberg, is it?
Doug Powers.
Doug, thank you. Doug Powers be appointed. So the board is, if you want to make that recommendation or change, if you're okay making the recommendation with the change from Craig Stoltenberg to Doug Powers, otherwise I can get some additional information, if you may, and come back with that one.
Doug is here. Doug, what's your capacity with the city of Middleville?
I'm sorry. Oh, hey, Jennifer. Hey. So I work as the planning and zoning administrator for the village of Middleville. And regarding, um, brownfields, landbanks, just a little about me, after being in the military.
So everybody can hear you.
Yeah. Thank you. Come on. See, I'm the planning, zoning administrator with the village of Middleville. So after my time in the military, I went on to do my bachelor's in regional and community environmental planning. After that, I did my thesis for my master's on opportunities and barriers for land trusts and urban placemaking. Did a lot of research in regards to landbanks through land trusts as well. I also worked for the CAV Chicago, where, if you're not familiar, every property is viewed as a potential brownfield site. So we had to do phase ones at a minimum on the properties. On public properties, we also assisted with environmental research that was needed for the properties to potentially be disposed of. During my time and tenure in the CAV Chicago of a five-county region, we utilized ninety percent of the brownfield funds. Just a little about me, there's this.
And the recommendation is, is that you were going to replace Craig Stoltenberg on that board?
That's correct.
And I think with your experience, that would be a welcome addition to that board as well, both on brown, on brownfield and the Land Bank Authority. So, questions? Any objections to us substituting Doug?
No. The question was regarding Cindy Vujay. That is another appointment, or...
Cindy is still staying on the Land Bank Authority for substituting.
She's currently on, she's up for reappointment then, not a new appointment?
She is on the Brownfield Redevelopment Board, and they want her to also be on the landbank.
Okay. So, so we're increasing the number of people?
On the landbank.
By two.
By two, yes.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions? The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners appointment of the following individuals to the Berry County Land Bank Authority Board, Cindy Vujay for a partial term beginning May twenty-eighth, 2024, and ending April thirtieth, 2025, and Doug Powers for a three-year term that begin on May first, 2024, and ends on April thirtieth, 2027. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Support Campbell. Motion by Getty, support by Campbell, to recommend of the board of commissioners appointment to the following individuals to the Berry County Land Bank Authority Board, Cindy Vujay for a partial term beginning May twenty-eighth, 2024, and ending April thirtieth, 2025, and Doug Powers for a three-year term that begin on May first, 2024, and ends April thirtieth, 2027. Additional discussion?
I'd just make a quick comment in relation to Mark's comment, that I appreciate that it feels maybe a little autocratic on this one. And I apologize for that, in that. But because, and if you don't, aren't comfortable with that's okay, but the reason it's a little autocratic and not going through what you, the advertisement called that, is that it's really driven by the Brownfield Board appointments, if you may. So those folks who are appointed, as you get to the Brownfield appointments down the road, then there will be opportunity. If you, it won't feel so autocratic.
Okay.
It should only happen this one time, as we get the Land Bank Authority, which is a newer board, aligned with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, how it should move along. But again, I apologize for that feeling of sort of autocratic.
I got a question.
Process.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Good catch. Commissioner Smelker?
I probably should know this, but can you tell me how many are on the Brownfields, and how many is going to be on the landbank?
Seven.
Seven on Brownfield?
Yeah.
And how many on landbank?
Nine.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next up, Ryan Cotton. He is with Gov HR to... He is with GovHR to lead our county administrator search firm update. I know that Ryan is here somewhere. There he is.
Yes. Unless you need me or want me out, let's do. Because while sunshine maybe unless you like it.
I'll accept your wisdom. Good morning. My name's Ryan Cotton, GovHR USA, and I'm honored and privileged to be part of your search team for your next Berry County Administrator. I have a few short introductory comments, because I didn't, haven't met everybody at the date with Personnel Committee. I have several handouts to pass out for your review, initial review anyway, and later on get more feedback from Michael and you as we go, and then proceed into what we call stakeholder interviews, and I'll receive your direction on that. So before I begin, is there anything else you wanted me to cover today that you have in mind?
Nope. If you want to make some introductory comments, I'm willing to offer commissioner questions.
Sure. So I am county, I was retired city manager for 35 years, retired from the city of Holland, and have been doing consulting for the last seven years in kind of a part-time capacity. It's called a 1099 independent contractor status with GovHR USA, which is, all humility aside, the largest executive search firm in the country. I live in Michigan. I live in Grand Haven, been there 29 years, so it's easy to be in Berry County. I've done dozens of searches, strategic plans, organizational studies, working now with the city of Hastings on recruitment, have in the past, have done organizational studies for the city manager there when she was in a different capacity, and the village of Caldonia right now, so I'll be in this area quite a bit for the next three months. I've done a number of county manager searches. The largest county project I've worked on is happening right now for a large county in Georgia. We're doing a countywide organizational study, and that is something that, you know, just adds to our knowledge about county, how counties function and what you're looking for. Today, I have a search calendar that I've drafted, I'll pass out in a minute, and also a draft county administrator position description. Once these are understood and accepted and you designate a point of contact, then we'll move forward with a advertisement, hopefully as early as early next week, and then hopefully conclude the entire process, which involves two interviews and all kinds of vetting, background interviews, reference checks, et cetera, with a possible conclusion by the end of July and a possible start date, the end of August. If those timeframes work for you, then we're golden. If you wanted something sooner, we'll work harder. If that's too quick, we can always back it off. So I think I'll start with passing that out. A key thing to think about as you look at this is, and it's actually noted in one of these lists, is who is my point of contact? It can be anyone on the board, it can be anyone on staff, it can be, sometimes there's a citizen search team. You tell me, and we'll be happy to adjust. One thing that's fun about search is that you get to know places even better than you thought you did. So I've already had some conversations with people about Berry County. I lived in Hastings, but I was very young, so I'm learning new things about the community here as well. So we, we enjoy, we love local government, obviously. We believe in public services and local government is closest to the people, and we like to exude that enthusiasm in all the work we do and also share with the candidates our enthusiasm for the community that we're serving, the client that we're serving. So I look forward to doing that for Berry County. I'll just run through this quickly. We view this meeting as a kickoff, and as I mentioned, looking for your direction on who the point of contact is. By the end of this week, we'll have the advertisement drafted, actually have it drafted now, but hopefully in a more final form, so that we can complete the posting early next week. We offer what's known as a stakeholder interview process whereby we're informing ourselves to do an eight to 12-page recruitment brochure. That recruitment brochure, we have an amazing design team that takes my words and your pictures and just makes magic out of it in a way that helps us interact with potential candidates. We do phone calls, many of them I know, but we widen the circle every time we do a search. And then this recruitment brochure helps to explain to families what they can expect in terms of quality of life and, and what it means to them to be in Berry County. Now, maybe we'll get super lucky, and there's someone right here in Berry County that is, has all the credentials and all the desire and has a perfect time in their life to serve as your administrator and that you're happy with. That would be a home run, plus, plus, plus. It often doesn't happen that simply, so we need to use the recruitment brochure to ensure that, that your best foot is out there, put forward, and we can make sure that we market your position properly and well, so that you're ultimately satisfied with the fit, and hopefully that fit lasts for a long time. So that's our goal. The recruitment brochure leads to, as I said, networking. June 28th is the suggested deadline, although we suggest that you leave it open until filled, quote unquote, so we don't turn away anybody if June 29th, someone finally decides, hey, that's the right place for me. We will give you all of the information and our recommendations based on interviews we've had, the phone conversations, the references that we've checked around July 12th under the schedule, and first interviews July 19th, second interviews July 23rd. These dates sound very specific, and there's a reason for that. It's important to let our, our key candidates know, in fact, we even publish it in the recruitment brochure, when these interview dates are planned. So if these dates look really bad to you now, please let us know now, so we don't, because otherwise we tell them, put this on your calendar and keep this time open, because we want, when you want to interview them, we want to make sure they're available. And this also helps you coordinate your calendars, and so we, we know that your, your time is very valuable and, and it's very hard if everyone's scrambling, and terrible if not everyone can be here. So it's really important that we, we look forward a few months and see what dates work best. I know you can't tell me right now, but this at least gives you an idea as to how it would flow. I think I'll stop there before I pass out the position description and, or announcement, and see if you have any suggestions or thoughts.
Commissioner Tunison.
Is, what's, what's the average tenure of administrators? I mean, is it something similar to like superintendents for schools, where I'm hearing they last two and a half years? You know what I mean? Is there some data out there?
Depends on the regional country and who you're talking to and why that person is saying that statistic. So the most common statistic, and I can do some data and give you, but it's probably around seven years. Five to seven years, I think, is probably the most common. We, of course, offer a guarantee if something didn't work out in the first year, which is rare. But there are, on the other end of the spectrum, are tenures like Michael has, which is, that's very rare. So I think you would probably be able to count on something between five and 10 years.
Additional questions? Commissioner Getty.
The July 19th is Friday.
Correct.
So that would be a special meeting of the full board. Is that what we're proposing?
I think those dates can be flexible, but.
And that's a board of health. We have a health board meeting that day.
I can just interject for a minute.
Sure.
Raises a good question that you might want to consider a special date, because you, with cows and boards, you still have your regular course of business, right? So to establish a date that, so that we aren't, as, as much as we would try, if you may, to keep items off the agenda, there's still things that are going to come up.
Absolutely.
And invariably, then you're, you're focused on trying to do a couple of things, so.
That's a good idea. Commissioner Doster.
I, so the advertisement, I was looking at the May 28th date. The, the advertisement is posted, which is our next board meeting, is that correct? Are we, will that be for our review first, or are you anticipating just posting an advertisement?
I have a draft with me right now.
Okay.
I'm going to pass out in a minute. Oftentimes, the, whoever you designate as the point of contact has authority to finesse some of the words.
Okay.
Or get back to you and get your thoughts, or tell me, hey, wait until the next board meeting, you know? All those things are possible and very common. So you'll have a draft today, and you, hopefully you'll give some feedback today to me and/or the point of contact.
Mr. Chair, one question.
Yes.
So is the, is the Personnel Committee going to weed this down to a certain number after you get applicants, or how are we going to, how are we going to do this?
The recruiter, Ryan and his team are going to go through a stack, hopefully, of candidates, run credentials, look at backgrounds, look at the fit versus in Berry County, and recommend a list of people to interview for a final interview. Okay. So I don't think that'll be done by Personnel Committee. I think the interview should be done by the full board, so.
I was just curious, how does this process work? That's.
Yeah, we rely heavily on them to vet the candidates, check credentials, everything.
Makes sense, what we're paying them for.
So you anticipate that the board would do the first and the second interviews, son?
Yes, I do. I think that'll be a full board operation. I think that you want to be involved in that. This is an important position.
Okay, and so do you anticipate then we should have a, two special board meetings in order to do that?
I would anticipate that at this point, so. Like I said, you never know until you get your list of candidates. There may be someone that's just exceptional, that's local, whatever the case is, but typically it's a two-interview process.
And this point person or whatever, that, I mean, would we just put the, the chair of the Personnel Committee in that position, or is that on the agenda to discuss what, who we appoint as the, the point person for him to, to discuss and maybe perhaps finesse?
What we recommended to Ryan at this point is administratively, Michael is the best contact.
Oh, okay.
But I would like to be included, both myself and Dave Hadfield, in all communications and emails that go back and forth, so there are more than just one person that's got their brain around it. So obviously with Michael being the administrator, it's a little awkward, but, you know, he's, his office does an exceptional job of handling and fielding all information requests that come in, so it's a logical point.
Can I just add in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to do the administrative. I'm accessible, I'm, and make sure that, if you may, that point of contact, either Dave or Dave, if they're not responding, that I'm following up and nudging them to say, okay, we have a timeframe, and keep things on task, if you may. But there are certain, there's, there's a limit to that, if you may, and I, I recognize that, I hope that I'm.
That you're not selecting the next, your own replacement, basically.
Absolutely. I'm really sensitive that, so to that point of contact, I think that, make, understand that, I understand that there's an asterisk around administrative, and, and it's a short, leash, if you may, or a fine line, because there will be questions that, that are policy and board issues, that that would be left to the point of contact there, as well as then to determine, does the full board need to be pulled in on something? So.
Okay.
Great question.
And Ryan, when I see this, you know, it says advertisement drafted and sources provided, advertisement posted, complete internal and external stakeholder interviews on May 29th. So the stakeholder interviews are part of the process as far as developing the brochure representing Berry County, not necessarily part of the process for the advertisement. You feel like you have a pretty good grip on the county administrator position, the do's, don'ts, what, what we're looking for in there.
Yes, and I'll pass this administration, or this announcement out in just a minute, which, which is, stays within the typical limit of two pages and, and does exactly what you just said. It gets the, our foot, our oar in the water out there and gets people thinking, and then we follow up with, I have 150 candidates that are, our program is already matched to, to suit Berry County. I have another 20, 25 that I know personally, that I want to make sure I have personal conversations with, and that recruitment brochure will then come later to kind of, you know, a week or so later, to then kind of hopefully get people over the edge of any resistance they might have, because change is change, right? So it helps warm, warm them up to Berry County in ways that they would not ordinarily be able to do it. So it comes at a later state, a later, a later step, and the dates here are perfectly aligned with what we usually find is most successful.
Okay. Because I feel that's an important step, is to get input from my fellow commissioners, from the county administration office, and from, from other stakeholders in the community as well, to put that together, so. Just wanted to be sure that was being done in the correct order, so.
Right, and, and maybe that should be, maybe I should say the week of May 27th, because we'll take however long it takes in terms of how many you'd like us to speak with. They're about half-hour interviews. We ask, you know, what their ideal next county manager would be like in terms of skills or attributes, experiences, what is the best thing about living in Berry County, you know? And we also look for anything that is not perfect, not that we want to really promote that, but sometimes it's helpful to find the right fit. So if, if it's a, an area that is rural, that's sometimes what people are looking for precisely. If it's an area that's urban, sometimes there's challenges that people rise to the level of wanting to, to address. So I kind of can imagine what it might be like here, but we want to ask people and hear it from their own words. Stakeholders, in my view, is, is each one of, everyone on the interview team, and you just talked about yourselves being the interview team, it could be key people in the administration, it could be other key elected officials, it could be leaders of key nonprofits or other entities in, in the, in the community. There are some clients that have me speak only to the chair of the commission, and of course, that's easy for us, but I don't think it is, does as good a job as, as those that have us speak to a broad array of people expressing their, you know, what they hope to see in the next, next chief administrative officer. And that also builds some ownership on the part of the community in terms of what the outcome ends up being.
Okay. Are these phone interviews, or are these going to be face-to-face interviews? What are you planning?
It can, I, if, face-to-face, I'll be returned for those if people prefer. It can be Zoom interviews if people prefer. Some people just want to talk on the phone. So it's whatever that, that stakeholder prefers.
Okay, perfect. Additional questions?
I would like to see face-to-face, that way you get a sense of who they are personally. I mean, I like conversing with people, I can, you know, get to know them.
Absolutely. Okay.
The, the stakeholders, you said that the board here is a stakeholder, then?
I view each member of the board as a stakeholder.
Okay, so if we were to be, this is for May 29th.
Those will be happening quickly.
Yeah, would that constitute a meeting?
Not individually.
Oh, individually. Is that deliberating toward a meeting? Is it, what, does that violate the Open Meeting Act?
No, because you'll be talking to Ryan one-on-one.
Okay.
So usually the point of contact. So, usually, the point of contact, and I think Michael is on that list now, would give me a list of emails and say, here's the stakeholders we'd like you to speak with, and then I would interact with you by email, what time is good, how would you like to do this, and then we would schedule that time, and I would work appropriately however that individual wants to work together.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions? Okay, carry on.
I'm going to pass out the position announcement now. You're going to see some words in red font. I've done some additional work since I produced this, and I have some of those answered. The red font means I needed to look it up and have further conversation. But there's... The biggest one is on the flip page, and if the newspaper is here, please don't publish this, because it's right now only me guessing at what a good compensation range should be. So, I'm aware of some of the compensation for other county managers in the area, county administrators, and that's... Those are some tentative numbers. If you have opinions that you'd want to express that are at odds with these numbers, by all means, I mean, it's going to be your hire, and you want to make sure that... There's a lot of things you have to consider when you consider pay ranges. I can do more research as well, if you'd like that, because that's always possible. We can do what we call a mini salary survey, although I have some data already on that, but we can do more. And other than that, I followed the job description, and once again, it can only be two pages, so it's not exhaustive. Experience level is seven years, that's right out of the job description, and you suggest that you have a education, should be a graduate degree. I'm putting in bachelor's also, obviously, as a prerequisite to that. So, I'll pass this around, and then I'll go through each paragraph. How much time would you have today?
We're here.
We're here. All right. So, we'll take maybe 10 minutes on this and get some initial reactions.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned earlier, this is helpful to get into the various sources of publication. They can be as few as, you know, three or four, and as many as 18, I think we've done. And there is a budget of up to $2,500 that is part of our proposal. The average is more around 1,400 to 1,600, and the point of contact will make some of those judgment calls once we provide the list of what we've done for other county administrators and what is possible. So, the first paragraph is really trying to make sure that people know where Berry County is and what some of the main attributes and amenities are, and I won't spend a lot of time on that. If you have comments or suggestions, you can jot it out or jot it down, or ask your point of contact to be responsible. The next paragraph is about the services provided. I've since looked up, the latest budget being 21 million. The point of contact maybe has a more refined number for that and what those services are. And if I've missed something, we want to make sure we get it in there. If I have a better way of phrasing it, I want to put that in there. And I've also since read some of your financial data and talked with Mike, and the Berry County has a AA bond rating, which is very good, and I think is an attractive attribute of the county. The next... The third paragraph lets the person know what makes up Berry County in the way of other governmental jurisdictions, and also how you and how many of them of you are there. Sometimes, if there's a big election coming up, we mention that, because that's important to people to know about their job security. I haven't heard of that yet here, but we'll play that by ear. And of course, you approve the budget, and you're responsible for hiring the county administrator. I'm just flying through here, just so you get a sense. The last full paragraph there explains what the county administrator does, and that, of course, you can't put in one paragraph everything that Michael does in a week, but you do want to at least touch on some of the main things that are essential to know. I know that the county administrator has many other positions in addition to the deputy county administrator that report to that position, and we can list them all, but it is important to let people know that there's a deputy county administrator. That's not the case everywhere, and that's, I think, a good attribute of Berry County. I'm going to flip the page. The required elements is education. I mentioned bachelor's degree, graduate degree in business or public administration is what the job description reads. Experience is importance. In the job description, it says seven years of administrative supervisory experience in local government with responsibility for budgeting, personnel purchasing, and human resources. I think that says that very well. I'm glad it's not 10 years. Some communities insist on 10 or 15 years, and those candidates are hard to find, and that would reduce your number to choose from. Sometimes, I recommend five years if it's a very difficult recruitment, because you need to make sure that you open up the gates a little bit. But I think seven years is a good number, especially someone in Mike's position of that degree of responsibility. Knowledge, that's out of the job description, obviously, public finance, budget, practices of public administration, management and supervision, media relations. I added "and" presentation skills. That was not in the job description, but I think is usually very important. Legal terminology and court procedures, and I'm sure Mike recognizes that I trunk... Michael, that I truncated a little bit, just for purposes of length. I added, in red, professional experience working with a policymaking board, demonstrated commitment to quality improvement and consensus building, ability to strategically plan and implement complex and creative, I should say, operational programs, demonstrated integrity of and accountability for services provided to the county, and supervisor experience using collaborative management principles, so not necessarily a top-down management approach, but rather one that is more current and works better in today's environment. Preferences. The job description mentions preferences are for a county administrator or city manager, and I've added... I think I've added deputy, I'm not sure if that was there or not, in a comparably sized or larger organization. Residency is not mentioned anywhere. It can easily be deleted. Oftentimes, it's one of the first things on candidates' minds after the salary, so you tell... I know by state law, residency is not required. I assume it's preferred, but that's in red, because it was unknown when I put it in there, but that's oftentimes the way the language reads. I think I'll just stop there before we get to compensation and see if there's any questions or suggestions right off the bat.
I think there's some wordsmithing that we can do on it, to go through some of it. For example, Gun Lake Casino is not in Berry County, so...
Oh, my bad.
That's a... Gun Lake as a recreation destination is in Berry County, but the casino itself is not, but it's close.
Thank you.
Commissioners are elected to four-year terms now in the next election versus two, and we have our own road commission that maintains the roads, so the county board is not involved in that at this point. But like I said, these are all things we can wordsmith out. These are not big deals. Most of it seems very palatable, very efficient, so.
What about the fact of living here? I mean, is that something we... Would be an important thing?
Can't do it.
You can't do that?
I prefer the way he's got it stated.
Which is? What was it stated?
Not required, but preferred.
Okay.
Would be nice, whatever.
That would be an interview question as well, that you would ask them if you plan on being part of this community, living in the community, whatever the case is, so...
Makes sense.
Because that's important.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Personally, I'd like to see the requirements loosened a little, maybe, so that we have... I think that there probably are excellent candidates out there that might not... Like the seven years' worth of experience, I wouldn't have a problem going to five on that. This requires exactly a graduate degree in business or public administration. That's it. I mean, a doctorate in some... There are related fields that you could have a doctorate in. I think that you could possibly do a good job at this.
Finance or actuary or...
Law.
Well...
Not for myself, of course, but there are other related fields.
Chiropractic.
Chiropractic, okay.
Finance, actuary, law, or chiropractic.
Well, just a related field. I mean, I just hate to exclude people that might have something that's relatively close, but they're... I mean, it's such a... It's one or the other. It's business or public administration. I mean, those would probably be the best candidates, but...
Yeah, or related fields, yeah. Michael, how many years' experience did you have when you were hired?
When I hired?
Zero.
I was right out of college, had just finished my graduate degree, had a couple of years in a program, actually running a community corrections program for Clinton County, and was hired, so... So, to Mark's, I'll let you judge if I've been successful or not, but to Mark's comment, there might be a candidate out there. County has a track record of that, so.
And the more experience that you require, the older the candidate, and the less amount of time that they're going to be spending here, too. We may want to take a chance like we did on Michael and break somebody in, and we had the opportunity to have him for 30 years that way.
Maybe it took him 30 years to break us down.
Yeah, that's probably more likely.
Yeah. I'm okay with five years. I think you're going to still do an excellent job of vetting candidates by, you know, going through as well, so...
Yeah.
You know, we're going to look at those resumes in detail.
I think that's a good step. I also like the idea, finance, law, related fields. There's some other language we've used before. I'll take a look at and propose that is more open-ended or has more abilities for people to have done those things. When we get to compensation range, I'll make this point now, because it's on my tab of mind. The five years that you just mentioned enables you to... Doesn't preclude you hiring someone with 30 years, but there might be... As I mentioned, there were some, you know, I don't know, there's 400 students that I've taught in the last 20 years. Many of them have gone into local government. Some of them don't have seven years yet, but maybe they're at six. So, that five is good, because it allows a mid-career, early-career professional to maybe apply. But you don't need to accept them. It all depends on the whole process. When I move to compensation range, 160,000 is somewhat higher than your current compensation, and it's... And that's not a reflection by me putting this in here on your current administrator in any way. It is a reflection on the marketplace, and it's important that we... You have a funnel that is wide, a wide range, because that attracts attention, and without attracting attention, you never get the number of candidates that you'd like to see. So, many clients, though, do not pay at the top end for the initial hire, because it's based on qualifications and experience, so it depends on qualifications and experience. But I'm encouraging you to put something out there that's a stretch number, and hopefully it's a number that can be explained to everyone else in the county that needs to know for the purpose of getting the most highly qualified candidates in the door and in front of you. 125,000, the low end, was selected, because in the numbers that I saw and was received and regard to other similar counties, that was the low end of what they're paying, so I figured that's probably a good low-end number.
That was my question, if you had looked at competitive data from similar-sized counties.
Okay. I have, and most of that data has come through a question I had of Mike, because it's more recent than the last county search I did in Michigan, which is two years old. So, if you'd like, I can freshen up some of my other data and get back to you. So, that, for the purposes of this meeting, that's a discussion point.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You made a comment regarding the competitive range of the salary earlier about asking the media not to publish that, and I think that was maybe sort of a joke, because, I mean, this is a public meeting. We are broadcast live. Everyone's going to know these numbers.
Thank you for...
Okay.
Let me clarify. I don't publish this as the decision.
Okay.
It's rather now, something I've put before you for discussion.
Okay.
So, please don't, until it's a decision. You know, there's no point in publishing something that came from my mind when it's your decision.
It's a recommendation, or it's a... What's a good term for that?
Suggestion.
Suggestion?
Yeah.
Suggested... Suggested range? Okay. Additional questions or input?
I think that's accurate.
I don't know if it matters or if it's helpful. I'll share real quickly for those... I think I shared with the Personnel Committee, but for those that aren't aware, my current salary is 143,000. So, I think Ryan and I'm just... My observation has presented you with a good range. I only bring that up, and I said this in personnel, you kind of have to forget about me, if you may, in this process. I've made, you know, my decision, if you may, what... And I want the same thing you want, is a successful candidate. I want you to be able to attract the best person you can for Berry County, because there's a lot of staff here that are relying on that. So, I only bring it up so that you have some sense. If you didn't, weren't aware, you're thinking, what is it that I'm making? So, it gives you a pretty good range, and if it means that you have to pay somebody more than what I'm making after 30 years, you... That's... You've got to make that decision. It's a tough labor market. There's a lot of things. So, anyways, I just kind of bring that up as information, if it's helpful.
Ryan, are you... I guess my question is, are we going to words... Would you like us to wordsmith this, put it before the board for next Tuesday's meeting and get it back to you? Do you need this sooner than that? Is this a... Do we need a formal board action on this to approve this, or do we... Are you just looking for input as far as some guidance from the board?
Guidance to your point of contact. So, if you said today, for example, you're happy with the skeleton of this, the nuts and bolts of it, and have someone wordsmith it, that's all I need. If you'd like to have it on your next board meeting, then I'll work with the point of contact to get it every... Everything precisely the way that you want to see it, and then it can be voted on, and the schedule can adjust. I mean, this is... These dates are not my dates. They're intended to be dates that facilitate your needs.
Well, the question for the board is, are you guys comfortable enough with the base information in here that we can wordsmith this, move it to seven years or five years versus seven, expand the graduate degree in business or public administration to finance or other related fields? You know, the salary range, I think, is commensurate, and I think that we can smith out the front side of this fairly quickly. If you're comfortable with that, Michael and I and Ryan can sit down, or Dave Hadfield can sit down and do that, and then get this out there as soon as possible. If you think this is something that we need to take a look at and vote on next week, we'll bring it back to the full board, and you can take a look at it. The risk is you're delaying the process, so. If you're comfortable with this format, I think there's nothing here that's egregiously wrong. I think we can just narrow it, sharpen it a little bit, and get it out.
I think that'd be fine. We've already given our input on it. I think you could wordsmith it and go forward.
Okay.
Doesn't require... Doesn't require another board approval, I don't think.
Okay.
I think it's important to stay with an aggressive calendar. We know we have, we have an end date, and I think it's important that we, we get started.
For those of you who don't know, is it, I mean, Michael did submit his letter of resignation to me with an end date of August, end of August. So, that's why we want to stay out, stay within the calendar, so, you know. Additional questions or discussions on that?
And, I'm going to somewhat okay this, but if we have anything, we get in contact with you or?
Michael.
Michael?
Yeah.
And there should be either today or tomorrow?
Yes. Let's do it quickly.
Yeah, I agree.
If you review it and have any input that you'd like on this, that'd be outstanding, so, would love your input, so. Okay.
Good.
And then, Ryan, as far as the rest of the process, looking at the calendar, recruitment brochure layout in early June, which that's coming up quickly, first review of candidates and credentials at the end of the month. So, after we get the advertisement out there and get the recruitment brochure out there, it's actually going to be fairly quiet for the next 30 days.
Exactly.
I mean, you're not going to be kicking out resumes to us to look at. You're keeping those all in a file for your review, and then you're going to narrow that focus based on the qualifications and who you feel the best candidates are.
Correct, and that's for several reasons. One, you know, our work isn't done until it's done, and it takes a lot of vetting before we, you know, want to bother you with information, but you'll end up getting 12 to 14 to 16 names. That being said, every two weeks, we do a status report to the point of contact, just saying, hey, this is how many we have, this is what we're doing next, to whatever. Occasionally, there might be a candidate that comes up that, that we want to just touch base about, but, you know, to add to what we're learning about the person. But those are individual conversations with the point of contact or contacts. And yes, the full board won't hear from me again until you designate a date for review of the, and I suggest here that it's July 16th, which I think is one of your normal meeting dates, but it can be modified accordingly. Where you'll see me, you'll get all the data from us, which will be 100 to 200 pages depending electronically, and we'll, you'll have a chance to look it over. I'm assuming the point of contact will also, you know, we take this, our stakeholder interviews, we put it in pros, and we add pictures, oftentimes pictures that are provided by the client, and that can come before the full board. There's typically time for that, but if you don't need it, then the point of contact will give me approval to run with that as well.
And if we, if we get to throw out a number of 50 people that apply for this position or submit a resume for this position, we're not getting 50. We're getting the 15 that you narrowed it down to. Is that correct, or we're getting the entire buffet?
You're getting the entire buffet on the ones that we think are most attractive, let's say eight to 12. And then you'll get a list by name and title and location for all of the candidates. So, on occasion, you might say, oh, I know that person. We should add them to the list. So, on July 16th, that's exactly what you'll do.
Okay.
I, I want to say that everything is confidential, however, until such time as interview invitations are made and accepted. So, candidates need that confidentiality because oftentimes, you know, until they're a semifinalist, it's important not to have these conversations with their original employer, even though most employers are good about it, some are less good. So, confidentiality until that point is important.
Okay. And with the recruitment brochure, after the stakeholder interviews, are we going to see that information as far as, again, being able to smith it or create it after your design team puts it all in there?
Right.
Or have a review before it's released, or whatever the case is?
As soon as the stakeholder interviews are done, I'll be writing it as I go, but then the draft will be sent to the point of contacts, and they will hopefully review the language, the verbiage, and make suggestions, as well as if they haven't already, you know, submit pictures from your chamber or whoever here does marketing for the county, and then, then we'll drop those in stylistically, do, do the magic, and then it'll come back to you.
Okay.
And you'll see it before it gets used.
All right. Any more questions for Ryan? I appreciate your time this morning. Very good information, and we will look forward to getting that out there and getting the process started, and also for the stakeholder interview. So, we'll compile the list of people that we feel would be important for you to talk to, as well as the board of commissioners, or in addition to the board of commissioners, so.
Excellent. Well, I look forward to getting a knowledge of you a little bit better, and once again, it's an honor to be here and look forward to making everything work to the best of our ability and hopefully exceed your expectations.
Okay. And you'll leave your contact, or they have your contact information in the brochure, but if you leave your card in Michael's office, if any of the commissioners have questions, they can reach out and get ahold of you.
I'll just put a couple here.
Thank you. Enjoy Grand Haven. We should do the meetings out there on the beach.
I'd be delighted to have you come.
Beautiful time of the year, especially with.
Go down to your beach.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you very much.
All right, commissioners, one final point of business. We had one of the best slate of veteran interviews I think we've ever had. I mean, the resumes and the people are equally impressive with everything. We do have one position open, and we need to select one person for the Veterans Affairs Board.
So, Mr. Chair, I did ask Michael during the break what the, or request whether it's possible to enlarge the board. I don't know if he could respond, whether that's a possibility, since these candidates were so stellar. I just thought maybe that should be on the table as well, but.
You know, I think they have asked that question in the past, and I don't think that in the bylaws that they can just arbitrarily expand the board to do that. That would be a question.
I was thinking that it was expanded once before from three to five, but.
We did. We, the county board expanded it from three to five in a cursory look, and I qualify, I'm doing this on my phone, on the phone, right, is I, it appears that it could go up to seven.
Okay.
Up to seven. So, but I, if that's something you wanted to entertain, my recommendation might be that you appoint somebody today to fill that, and who you want, with the assumption that we'll look into whether we can, actually, we would come back with a proposal if that we, in fact, can expand it and all the proper vetting, if you may.
Yeah, that would be a discussion ahead with the Veteran Affairs Board as well.
Could go up to as many as seven.
Okay.
I think one should ask for it if they want to.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion for Sylvia, Sylvia.
What's her name? Raffels?
Raffels.
Raffels.
Do we do it that, do we?
That way, or you want to have a discussion on it?
Well, I.
Or we all fill out a piece of paper?
Or, or, did we have the clerk call the name and ask, or, or our names and ask who we're voting for in the tally it? Is that how we did it the last time?
We could have the clerk do a roll call, and when she calls your name, you can give your recommendation. And then if there's a clear winner there, that makes it easy. If not, then we'll narrow down the candidates and go from there.
Okay. Doster?
Ryan Reader. I forget Sylvia's last name. Sylvia.
Raffels.
Sylvia Raffels. Smoker?
Gary.
I'm sorry?
Gary Thaler.
Okay. Campbell?
Sylvia.
Tunisin?
Sylvia.
And Jackson?
Sylvia. I missed one in there somewhere, so I had one for Ryan, three for Sylvia, or four for Sylvia?
Four.
He's four.
Four for Sylvia, one for Gary. Additional discussion? Would you like to make the motion for Sylvia?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Sylvia Raffels be put on the Veterans Affairs Board.
All right. Motion by Tunisin, support by Campbell, to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to appoint Sylvia Raffels to serve on the Berry County Veterans Affairs Committee for a partial term that begins on 1/1/23 and expires on 12/31/26. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And thanks to all of our veterans who interviewed. We will have that discussion on the board and see if there's an opportunity to expand. You do valuable work, and your input today, your interviews were fantastic. I just appreciate what you guys do for veterans and your fellow veterans in this county. So, thank you. We hope we have a place for you because those are some great resumes and great interviews, so, I appreciate that. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Yeah, Gary White. Last meeting, I read the violations of open meetings. Elected officials' ignorance of the law has been legislated to be an excuse for elected officials by elected officials. Ignorance of the law is no excuse for the common person, but we have to educate you or it's an excuse for you. Mike Marlowe was reading of the Democratic, or Republican Party platform, was, wants to get a little more eye-opening. It's always good to rehear things. How many people here on this board as elected officials have represented the private sector senior care facilities? Who has stepped up and addressed any of their concerns? I haven't seen that. So, when bigger government or big government is expressed, and nobody has ever looked at private sector and addressed any of those concerns, have you really done your job as elected officials representing businesses in Berry County, people of Berry County? I like to, this is one that I'll have to get with the mail, but if we follow the rules, we will get money from tipping fees. I'm going to guess this is a government fee being reinvested in the government. So, once again, overregulating people is not a good thing. The word misinformation comes up. I've heard it twice now here at this meeting and at another township meeting. Then I just think, you know, I'm from the government, and we are here to help Ronald Reagan. Well, the new one comes out, I am from the government, and I will tell you the truth. You know, so when you look at who's telling you, who's considering what is misinformation? What is the true fact there? So, I've got to beat a 12 o'clock deadline, so I would like to hear some comments, but I don't have time today. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Joel Everson, Rutland Township. I wasn't able to finish my thoughts, so I want to continue where I left off. Society has an imperative, which leaves us all responsible and culpable for the success of society or the failure. To the point I made of the Oxford School shooting, we must hold our families, friends, and neighbors accountable. It isn't comfortable to correct others, and it can be painful, but there is a time when rebuke is demanded. Now, we first keep ourselves in check before we go to our neighbor. If we continue to propagate an unlimited proliferation of rights without regard for the responsibility demanded to maintain those rights, we will fail to maintain liberty in our society. But what is liberty without wisdom and without virtue? It is the greatest of all possible evils, for it is folly, vice, and madness without tuition or restraint. This is Edmund Burke in his Reflections of the French Revolution. He predicted that the French government would fail. And since 1789 and the French Revolution, Francis had 14 constitutions, including five republics. So, to the people screaming, we are not a democracy, we are a constitutional republic, the response should be, without morality, responsibility, and virtue, what's your point? What good is it? To go back to Edmund Burke's statement, liberty without wisdom and virtue is the greatest of all possible evils. What does that evil look like? Well, is the success of our nation purely contingent on the Constitution? Well, let's take a look at a number of Latin American nations south of our border that, hey, this work great for America. Let's, let's adopt that same constitution. We'll fix all of our problems that way. They all failed. And why is that? Because superficial understanding of liberty will end with superficial results. This all might have had a chance at sounding intelligent if I had actually paid attention at school, but let me follow up with this. I don't want people to hear what I'm not saying. I am not advocating for restrictions on liberty, only that if we continue to push for liberty while forsaking morality, responsibility, and virtue, we may win this battle, but we'll lose the war.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Dave Lasma, precinct delegate, Yankee Springs Township, also candidate for county commissioner District Two. I thank the commissioners for all their work and attention to the items of this morning. I would particularly like to thank all the veterans that came in and, and gave their statements regarding their consideration for this position. We are blessed in this county to have such men and women present and a part of our community. I myself am not a veteran of military service. However, my son is a retired Air Force pilot and uses the VA services regularly due to the stresses put on his body operating that aircraft, F-16. Our son-in-law is a Army chaplain specializing in counseling, and there is a huge need for that within the military. I know what he's doing now, and I know what he will do once he's out of this service. He's, has a passion for, for counseling and helping individuals, and they were just recently deployed to Europe. My other comment has to do with the GOP questionnaire that went out. This questionnaire would simply allow an individual who adheres to the general planks of the conservative party to write their opinion or statement regarding where their positions are relative to that party platform. It's not surprising to me that someone who does not adhere to that, to our GOP party platform would have a problem with those questions, but they would have their own set of questions and their own objective and purpose that they would be speaking to. So, this was meant to hit conservative Republican candidates to express their opinion and their view on these important positions. All right, that's it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Almost. Well.
Couple, couple of thoughts, and I'll try to articulate my thoughts in English a little bit better than previously. I apologize. That seems to be going the way of the rest of the body. There was some back and forth last week, and I think some of the commissioners should take a look at the New York Times versus Sullivan. That establishes the, the manner in which a member of the public can address a public body or an elected official. There's a lot of latitude there, and there's other rulings that apply to that. Random thoughts? Random thoughts, you should also take a look at Heller versus DC. That gives us the right to bear arms. That was established in, more by McDonald's versus City of Chicago, that extended the rights from federal laws to state and local laws. So, again, that's quite a bit of latitude. In fact, they don't necessarily disagree with some of the things that were said previously. I never thought I'd say this, but I have a new semi-hero, and that would be Attorney General Nessel argues to eliminate over 90%, 96% of consumers' energies, $136 million rate hike, and advocates gas reduction. That's really nice to hear from an elected official. Let's cut down the cost to the consumers. Realize that some members weren't really interested in hearing too much about the MPSC, but you're going to hear it again. The MPSC conducts nearly all its deliberations in secret, despite the fact an exemption from the Open Means Act that commissioners fought for and won in 1988, which serves the lawmakers and the public as a limited exemption to expedite rate cases. Amidst that lack of transparency, more than of the 4,520 orders the MPSC has voted on since at least 2010 have been voted down. Our Free Press analysis showed, the last no vote cast by any commissioner was in 2015. In fact, no more than two commissioners, despite the fact that no more than two commissioners can come from the same political party. By the way, this is from a Free Press article that was written by Paul Egan, if you want to validate that. The revolving door for utility commissioners applies not to just where they go when they leave the commission, but where they came from. For example, former Governor Rick Snyder appointed a former consumers' energy executive to the state panel. Economists say the independence of commissioners from the entities that regulate can be undermined in sometimes subtle ways, and it's a phenomenon known as regulatory capture. I really think, we have to know who we're dealing with with this setting and location, ordinance, standing, ordinance is coming down. This is who we're going to be dealing with on the larger, large-scale projects. Also, for the last, this is the fourth week-
Summarize, please.
I will, but you've allowed that previously. I'd still like to see a date on when the ordinance that is being constructed by our attorneys at this time is going to come back to the board to even go into a closed session. I have not read dates yet, I think that's the period we hear one, and it, we're keeping closer and closer and closer by incremental steps. So, and I don't know why some of the other commissioners aren't pushing for that also. Thank you very much, and have a nice afternoon.
Thank you. It's afternoon now, when you started, it was morning. It's been a, when you started, it was morning, so now it's afternoon.
No, it's not evening.
When did you sneak in?
I'm sitting over here out of the sun.
The point I wanted to make about the questionnaire has been totally missed. The questions are the problem, not the fact that a questionnaire was sent out. None of the questions ask about qualifications for the office, nor do the questions ask how the candidate would serve the county or make the county better. Maybe this will help. If I were looking for a heart surgeon and sent out a questionnaire, I wouldn't ask, do you have flowers in your yard, and if so, what kind? Do you like pets? How do you feel about Fords versus Chevys? No, I'm going to ask, where did you go to school? Because I don't want a vet or a doctor of dentistry doing heart surgery on me. What experience have you had? How do you handle difficult cases? I think you get the idea. The GOP questionnaire should answer how the candidate is going to serve our county. After all, I thought the GOA wants to serve, GOP wants to serve the people, not rule the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Additional public comment?
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you for your support, Commissioner, and going forward, I think you made an excellent decision with that vote, and I would be open to another position if you do determine to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a point of note, too, I think it was Commissioner Smoker pointed it out that there are two expiring terms at the end of the year for the Veterans Affairs Board. So, additional public comment? Commissioner Commons, Commissioner Doster?
I was asked if I would make a correction to a statement that I made at the last board meeting. I was discussing the Lake Improvement Board at Gun Lake, and I was responding to a question that you had about its composition, and I said that I thought that it was established under Part 307 of the Drain Code, and it was Part 309, and they wished for me to make that correction. Apparently, people are looking it up, so.
It's good to know.
And I also handed out something that I got from the agency on aging, just some stats on Berry County of the aging population. And I thought was interesting is, for the first time, they've also got stats on the veterans and what war that they were in. I thought that was quite interesting. The total population of 60 and over in Berry County currently is at 27%. Calhoun, which we share that agency with, is 25%.
Interesting, good information, thank you. Commissioner Colton?
This weekend, the National Community Garden is going to be planting finally, and it's exciting because we've done a lot of work to get to the point that we're at right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Getty?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Smell? Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted to say to everybody that, to me as a veteran, this weekend was a very special weekend. If you get an opportunity to go and visit a program, there's many, I'm going around and participating at the Yankee Springs one at 4:00 on Sunday, at the Orangeville Veterans' Memorial, 2:00 on Sunday, and then Prairieville, following the parade in the cemetery, the parade's at 1:00. It's a good thing to get out, too, bring a kid with you, bring a van child with you. And if you really want to know what the cost of freedom is, you need to attend one of these, and you will understand totally how precious our freedom is, but if we're not willing to make that sacrifice, freedom will be no more. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunisin?
You know, I'm honored to sit next to this veteran right here, because he's a great man for what he gives back. And everybody that came here today to apply for that position, you can tell how much this country means to them and their fellow veterans mean to them. And they shared a battlefield with them, and now they know some of their pains that they're going through and everything else, so the candidates that came there today, I was very impressed. And I hope maybe we can look into that if the Veterans Affairs Board would want to expand that, or else, like you said, Mr. Chair, a couple of positions coming up, and I hope these guys will come back. But let's not forget this weekend, what it's actually for, Memorial Day for the fallen. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just a few closing comments, since Larry brought it up, I'm under the impression that we will have a draft ordinance to review at some point this week and probably will go in closed session for attorney-client privilege next week if that is in fact the case that we get it back. So, the other question was, since we keep hearing about people saying that we're slow and behind and there's a drop dead date and we're going to miss it if we don't aggressively pursue this, I checked with our attorney and asked him what the drop dead date was, and he did some research and said there is no drop dead date except for November 29th, which is when the state statute or the state public act goes in force. That's when it needs to be. He said at that point, if you don't have an ordinance intact, then it probably wouldn't make any sense to have one. So we'll be well ahead of that date, and hopefully we can start the process as far as the review and publication and getting that information out as early as next week. So we'll see what we can do there. So we will keep you updated. So, thank you, enjoy the beautiful weather, we're stealing a few weeks of sunshine, so, and watch out for the storms. Luckily, Consumers is here to take care of all that stuff. See you soon.